Alright guys, welcome to our, I've forgotten the number, I think it's session number 14 for Kubernetes study group. Today, we're gonna be finishing out the security section. We got network policies to take care of and we're gonna be jumping into our last topic is storage, persistent volumes, regular volumes and storage classes. So, let's go ahead and jump into it. Network policies, think of the easiest way I can explain them. If any of you guys have worked with firewalls, it's your access rules. So, you're defining your ingress and egress on each pod and what ports that are accessible. There's other things that you can describe and or define in those so-called security rules, but that's the gist of it. Let me know if you have any questions or it's not, it's not clear. Yeah, um, network policies. We have, we're just gonna go through our Co-Cloud material and if you guys have any questions, just ask them. How many network policies do you see in this environment? As always, we do a kget or kubctl get network policies to see all of the resources of that specific type. And we see only one, at least in the default namespace and we can double check by doing a dash a to check all namespaces and yeah, there's only one available. So, let's go ahead and select that. What is the name of this network policies as we can see here on the name is called payroll policy? And I think then this one we can, which part is no, but so yeah, so here we're gonna go ahead and describe it. We're gonna look at more detail of this policy. And as you can see here, what is, this is, this policy type is ingress, it's only defining ingress. Something that you should know as a prerequisite is the default Kubernetes is to allow all traffic between pods. And that's what these are network policies, they're gonna be between pods, they're not gonna be going out to the outside of the pod unless you of course open up your ports, your, your node ports, but in this case, it's only inside of the internal, inside of your pods. Once you define an ingress rule, this is gonna be the only rule that is gonna allow. So, the allow all will, it will go to default, at least for the pods that are mentioned here. It will go to default as deny all except for the rule that you specify. So, in this case that we defined ingress, this is, it's only gonna allow ingress to port 8080. Everything else will be rejected, but egress will still be allow all because we did not define it. That's just something to keep in mind. Alright, which part is the network policy applied on? So, we can see here the pod selector is gonna be named payroll, so we gotta look at a, so the way they are, they are defined is gonna be by the labels and label selectors. So, we gotta look for a pod that has the name payroll. That's how you're gonna be able to match it and we can do that by doing a kget pods and see we have four pods. As you can see, it's probably this payroll pod, but in the case that you are taking your test and you, it's not very clear, you can do, like there's way more pods that you gotta look through. We can do a kdescribe, you don't wanna describe each pod one at a time. So, we can do a kdescribe pod, this will describe all the pods and then we can just grab for the information that we need. So, we're gonna do a grep, dash i, we need name. Got the i, and then we also wanna know what pod this is assigned to. So, we're gonna do a before. Let's do 10 lines, I'm not sure exactly how many till we get, so, okay. So, here's our name payroll. And we wouldn't really want this, so if you wanted to get this better, clear this up a little bit, we can search for labels instead. There we go. Today, we can see all the labels and we can see the name of the pod that is associated with. And here's our label that we're looking for, name payroll. And it is under payroll pod. So, payroll. Does, did I grep? Did that grep command make sense to you guys?
Now, can you explain what, like what do, okay, the b?
Okay, yes. So, in the grep command, we're just gonna use this one as an example. Of course, we can do a grep dash dash help. And the b, the capital dash b right here is gonna be before context. So, what that does, it looks for 10 lines before whatever it finds. So, in this case, we were looking for label and then it looks for 10 lines before it. And you can see that this is a, oh no, sorry. Oh, so this is, it's looking at the 10 lines, okay, so let me just double check this real quick. I was to do, say six. Yeah, so then we don't see those other lines. So, yeah, what it does is it looks six lines before and the next one, the next thing that it finds is separated by these two dashes. And it's always gonna look for what you searched for, which in our case is labels and then six lines before. You can also do a dash after, in which case it will look for whatever you find and then I'll give you an example here. It will grab the six lines after instead. In our case, we wanted to have the name of the pod within that same search, so that's why I did the before. Does that make sense?
Gotcha.
You can also do a dash c that it will do before and after. An example, the b. As you can see, it looks six lines after, six lines before. The easiest way I found to remember is the dash a for after, dash b for before. Okay.
Thank you.
No problem. Next up, what type of traffic is the network policy configured to handle? So, let's go back to that network policy. And looks like the type of traffic that they're referring to is gonna be your policy type. As this is only gonna look at ingress traffic, it's not gonna look at the egress at all. So, in this case, we'll hit ingress. And what is the impact of this rule? So, the way we would read this is for the pod payroll, on the pod payroll, here's our payroll pod. The ingress traffic going to it, so that's traffic coming into the pod from the internal pod, the, or whatever pod has the, has a label name equals internal. So, that's gonna be this pod here as we saw here. Where's that guy? Internal, name, label is name equals internal, that matches this pod selector. So, traffic from internal pod will only be able to go to port 8080. Does that make sense? So, the one that matches the traffic from internal pod is to payroll pod is allowed? Is allowed, but it's only allowed to port 8080. There's an impact of the rule configured, okay. External pod, no, not external, internal pod can access port 8080 on payroll pod. So, here's a, they give you a visual representation. Oh, I think they, they also give us some, some pods here that we can, we can actually jump onto. This is the external facing app and this is the internal and we can actually search for, it's gonna be payroll service. If we just try to go on any port, it's not gonna work. Do port 80. Time's out. It has to be port 8080, we get a successful and it cannot come from the other pods. It can only come, well, actually, we did not configure that. Okay, so, oh, so, cuz it's configured on that, on the payroll service that it can only accept requests from internal pod. As ingress is defined, it will not, it will deny all other ingress. Does that make sense?
Yep. Big question, right?
Yeah.
So, basically, you creating segmentation within a cluster, right?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Correct, but the segmentation is only gonna apply to the pod that's affected. So, in this case, the payroll app, the internal pod, external pod, DB pod, at this moment, they are still accepting and able to request, they're able to do, to ingress and ingress to any of the other pods except for payroll pod. The, cuz payroll pod will deny any requests.
Gotcha.
Except for the ones that coming from internal pod. Alright, we'll keep on tracking, did I answer your question, Pat?
Yep, you did, thank you.
Alright, perform connectivity test using, so we just, that's what we just did. Using the user interface in this application to access the payroll. And as we saw, only internal application can access the payroll pod. Perform connectivity test using the user interface of the internal pod to access the external service port. So, what do you guys think will happen when we try to use the internal pod to access the external pod? As of right now, nothing has changed. Let's see, kget network policies, there's still only this, the same network policy, so nothing has changed. What do you guys think will happen when you try to do a request from the internal pod to the external pod?
Can we view the details of the policy?
Yep, it's the same policy that's up here and I can, yeah, same exact one.
So, the question is, what's gonna happen if?
If we make a request from the internal pod to the external pod on port 8080?
It should, it should grant, cuz it, cuz it can accept uh, traffic on port 8080, that's open. Yeah.
Yep.
The external is, is, oh, it's still open for everybody, so I'm thinking it should be granted.
You're right, that's exactly why. The default is allow all cuz we have not defined any rules on the external pod or the internal pod. It's allow all, so they can talk to each other freely and we can do, we can go ahead here and we can test it, that one was external something. External service, external service. Did they say a pod? Yep, port 8080, test, as you can see, a success. And if you change it to any port, it should be successful. Oh, so only 8080 is open, I'm assuming. But that's good to know, I did not know that, but only port 8080 is open by default. I'm sure that's defined somewhere in Kubernetes, but yeah, but it does have access, so it was successful. So, now they want us to create a network policy to allow traffic from the internal application only to the payroll service and DB service. So, we should not allow traffic from the internal pod to the external pod. Well, also, it should only be on port 3306 here instead of the default 8080. Cuz if, I'm assuming right now, if we were to do DB service. Yep. We do DB service on port 8080, that should succeed, does not. Not open. 3306. It does succeed on 3306. The DB service only has 3306 open, I'm assuming, and port 8080 closed. Describe pod. MySQL. Okay, so yeah, so it says 3306 open instead of 8080. Okay, so let's get started on this policy. So, to create a network policy, can we do this, I have not tried it, but can we do this imperatively, kcreate, what does it let us create? Doesn't look like we can create a network policy. So, the way I would do it is we're gonna go over to our documentation, network policy. If you're on the test, remember you do have access to the documentation, so you should learn how to search through them. The fastest way, network policy, here's one here and we can grab this guy here. And you see, we have an ingress and egress and we can just cut out the egress cuz we're not gonna be defining that here. Or the ingress, we're not gonna be defining, we're only defining egress. And let's go ahead and do a vim. 10 dot yml. And paste it here.
Looks like this policy does both, right?
Yes, yeah, you can do both, it's just in this case, it is asking us to only do egress.
Gotcha.
Okay, so match labels. And they had a name for us to use, get rid of this. Name. Internal policy. Pod selector, so the pod selector is gonna match you to the pod that you wanna, you wanna look for. So, in this case, let's do the first one for the payroll. So, do name. And the quotation or the colon means that, just think about it as the equal sign. Name equals payroll. Oh, sorry, sorry. So, this is gonna be from the pod that it's coming from, so this is actually gonna come from the internal pod. So, we're gonna match that to that one. Eternal. And egress to. And here, we're gonna change something, so we're gonna change it to a match label as well. So, to find out how to, how to write this out, what I would do is I'd do a kexplain. And think about it as like the main pages for Kubernetes. So, we're creating a network policy. And we need the spec. Cut. Yep, send the spec. So, we just do a dot spec to drill deeper. It was to tell us, so we're doing an egress here, the egress to. And here's our different selector, so we need, gotta need a pod selector. Match labels. So, it does have to be, it is case sensitive. And then we put our key value. Okay, so let's go back into that yml file. Let me just copy this. Reference. Okay. Back egress to pod selector. Match. Labels. And here should be our key value pair, which is gonna be payroll, name. Payroll. We can get rid of this. And for that one, we wanna be TCP port 8080. And we can then copy all of this. And for the other pod. MySQL. That one is gonna be 3306 for the port. Comment this out. Okay. Two pod, that looks good to me. Let's check here, Ctrl F. People, so here's the same version. Yep, just making sure we have the same syntax. Which labels name? Looks like they had their match label two spaces back. Let's do that. Okay, let's give that a shot. Kcreate dash f10. Okay, kdescribe network policies. Internal. And let's take a look here. So, on this one, it looks like we got from the internal pod. We are able to do, these are egress types, so we're able to hit the payroll app on port 8080. But then the SQL database on port 3306. That's what they were asking for, the name is correct, internal policy. And yeah, that's just us double checking all the work, we should be good to go. Alright, fantastic, and just so we could test it as well. Uh, DB service should still change that one. Internal 3306. Try again. Said it was right, but it is failing. Terminal facing DB service. 3306. We should not be able to hit the external anymore. Service. For 8080. It should fail. And the payroll app on. Payroll should work.
Yeah, you may have to refresh that page, right, maybe?
Try that, payroll service 8080. Are the pods, the pods is up? I might have to restart those pods.
Is there a way to verify what they're listening to?
We can jump onto the pods themselves, kexec. Now, let's go onto the internal. And we can do a command. Let's do a ping to payroll. Well, I don't know the, I don't know the DNS name. Let's do it first with a kget pods dash wide. I'll do kexec. Internal. A command ping. It's being to payroll.
Is ping allowed?
Maybe not, let's do a telnet.
Yep.
Telnet, do we have to specify port or we just write the port number?
Yeah, you specify the port. Just the port, just the port number, yeah.
They probably don't have telnet, yeah, they don't have telnet installed.
Yep. Oh, well.
The network policy does work. Their test, cuz you see they, we're getting a different error. And it's not timing out, so something, something with their test, how they test for, that's off. But the network policy does work, let's go ahead. No, that's the end of that one, so just to re- No, that's the end of that one. So just to re recap, the network policies are gonna be your, pretty much your access rules. Uh if you ever did it, worked on a firewall, for anybody that missed it, um it's gonna be your access rule. And your objects that you then define what, what can talk to what it's inside of Kubernetes. And this is for part to part communication, which by default is allow all. Until it is defined, in which case it becomes deny all except for the rules that you define. And we just use a, it's a, another resource um in Kubernetes, network policies, we define it. And create those rules. Any questions on network, network policies? Beans. Let's keep going. Um that's gonna be all for our security section. We're gonna be jumping over to storage. So storage is gonna be. So it's gonna be your, your volume mounts for Kubernetes. It's a, if you ever, with Kubernetes, anytime you create a pod. Uh or the container, uh anything you do inside the container. When the pod is restarted, everything's gonna get deleted, including all the data on that uh container. So the way to get around that is you can mount. As a volume onto the container that is gonna be referenced. Refer back to your host um path on you, uh on, to a directory on your host. So when that pod is deleted. That directory will remain on the host and they can then be reattached to the new, to a new pod. So we're gonna jump into it here. Storage, this, where's our test at? Security. Alright. So with storage, there's two ways you can do it. You can do it on the. On the pod itself, you can configure the volume and the volume mount. Uh the volume is gonna be reference, a reference to your host. Volume to your host directory, while the volume mount is gonna be the reference to your. Directory on the pod. And those two kinda, they, they bind to each other by specifying the same name on both of those. Uh the other way you can set this up is using persistent volumes and persistent volume claims. And we'll go through all of that in this example. Uh so they have deployed a pod. Let's inspect that pod and. See what's going on with its K get pods. Got a web app pod. Let's describe it. When you can see the mounts, here's the mount here very, well, it's, it's not the one we're looking for, but there is a mount here, variable on service account. Then we can then come down here, look at the actual volume. So this is where it's gonna reference the object on your host. In this case, it is a config map that it's referencing to. So that is not what we're gonna be working with today. We're gonna be working with directories. Uh we'll see, we'll see how it goes. Um. Application stores logs and location log app dot log. Let's view those logs. So as we did earlier, we're gonna exec into that pod. Exec web app. And we can just cat as they're telling us the slash log. Alright. So these are all the logs that are inside of that um container. But as you know. When that container is destroyed. These logs are gone. Uh as we saw earlier in the description, the, it's, it's not mounted, that volume is not mounted for that. For this directory. So therefore, if it's not mounted anywhere, it's gonna get destroyed when the pod is get, gets destroyed. So in this case. We will not be able to view these logs after it is destroyed. Okay, configure a volume to store these logs at var log web app on host. And they give us some specs to use here. So let's go ahead and. Okay, describe. Actually, let's do a K get pod. And I wanted a YAM. And I'm gonna redirect this into, this is question number four. For the YAM. And now vim. Okay. So here's our spec. And we wanna change it to that we can now have the volume. Var log web up. On the host. So let's go ahead and create that first. So here on the volumes, we're gonna add a new volume. And as you can see here. Uh it is a list. Uh you can see that by the dashes. So we could create a new, a new uh addition to a list by adding a dash. And our name is gonna be. Name for the volume. Let's name it log. Name calls log. Space here. And. We need the path. You can verify the, how to write the path. I think it's this without the capital H, but you can always verify this uh host path. Volumes. Do a control F host path. And you can see here, host pair, and then you wanna put the path underneath it. So this is the path that we want. Um just double checking. It's under volumes, under name. Make sure all of your indentation is correct. Okay, so we have our volume. Our whole, host value added to the spec. Now we have to define it as a mount. So we come up here to the volume bounce. Again, we'll do a dash. And the names have to match. So we named it over there, log. So it has to say, be the same name. Um log and mount. And this is gonna be your mount inside of the pod. And the, as you can see here, they wanted that slash log. Okay. Let's see, that's correct. And also define read only. Yeah, I usually put this as false. But let me see what the default setting is. So I'm just gonna leave that blank. And I wanna do a K replace. Dash dash force. To force it to replace it. And I will do a dash dash grace period. This makes it replace it immediately. Um you might not wanna do this under, in production, as it may cause issues lingering um. Lingering uh services. Uh but um on the test, when you wanna get things done as quickly as possible, cuz you are timed. You can do a grace period zero to make it delete the pod immediately. It's not gonna, is that, is, pretty much turns off the graceful shutdown for the pod. Okay, K replace dash dash force grace period zero and we're gonna use the file for. Okay. So let's K describe. Pod web app. Oh, we just wanna see. We see here it's mounted as read and write. To the default is read and write. And path. Log var log web app. Perfect. And one more thing, dash O YAM. Get. Okay. Yeah, where's our value? Okay, so it doesn't actually specify. Alright, I was just curious. So we are good here. So in this case, just so you guys can understand what's going on now, uh the previous uh time. What's going on here? Right, so we would do, we did a K exec. To get these files here. Uh now that volume is mounted on the host as well, so we can just do a cat slash var. Log. Web up. And here's a, here's that log here. And it's the same exact log. Well, it's actively changing it. But yeah, um. That same log is now available both on the host and on the pod. I am curious. Okay, delete. Pod. Leave the pod. It is what I mean by the grace period. As you see now, it's gracefully shutting down. So it's gonna take a minute.
Uh the users that we see in the logs, are those are the people using the system?
Yeah, so this um, this image that we're using is event simulator. And it's a simulation of uh logs. But that's what it will be. It's like you hear an application is do some logging. It is putting a log in, in a specific location on that uh pod. Even after it's deleted, we should be able to still get this file and the file is still there. So you don't lose that data.
Cool. Yeah, they got me cuz uh I was seeing, I saw user. User seven failed to connect. I was wondering, somebody, is somebody else trying? Trying to connect to the same thing. Okay, got you. Cuz that's a simulator. Got it, got it.
Yeah, it's just a simulator. Uh let's go ahead and recreate that pod as we may need it. Okay, could you do a K create for? Uh we need a dash F. Okay, our pod is, should be back. K get pods. And we should see these logs getting updated again. You can see it's very different than last time, viewing page three. These are one logged out. Okay. So it's logging again. Okay, next question. Create a persistent volume would give a specification. So now we're gonna be creating a persistent volume. This is gonna be a resource within Kubernetes. So key. So to create those, actually, we cannot create any of these um imperatively. We have to do it declaratively. So we wanna grab. Just go over to persistent volumes. Control F, your kind. Assistant. Not quite what we're doing. Alright, we'll just grab this guy. Not the same, but we can change it around. Uh so let's go do a vim five, cuz this is question number five. Paste. And we need to change it to have this spec. So first thing is a reclaim policy. We can change that over to retain. And the retain. Retain policy. Means that um after the pod is deleted, it's gonna retain this volume and it still will not be usable. Versus the, you could also have it as delete, which it, it will just delete the volume uh when the pod is deleted. And recycle where it will delete it and make it available again. For other pods to be able to grab it. Uh think about uh persistent volume is gonna be. It's gonna be a, a, a block of storage. And each pod can then do, you can then create a volume claim. That claims a piece of that um, of that volume. Or you, you could claim. At persistent volume. Cuz it's not really a piece, cuz if you do claim a volume. If, it's gonna try to match you as close as possible to the storage amount that you select. But if you, you're claiming fifty megabytes. Think that's the example here. And this one that we're creating is a hundred megabytes. It will claim this whole hundred megabytes. It was something to keep in mind. Um so let's go ahead and uh we're gonna be setting this to retain. And they wanted read write many. Boss system is fine and a hundred megabytes. Uh let's change the name over to PV log. And host path. Now that's not specified. We have that here. Host. Program. Okay, we're gonna have to. Do a K explain. Persistent. Value. I misspelled the persistent. As a volumes. Oh. Okay, persistent volumes, that spec. Host path. And we can do type and path. We want path. And we just write the path there. Okay. Again, I'm gonna just grab this, just so I know. String. Looks program. PV. Looks good to me unless this is supposed to be a list. Let's find out. Okay, create five. Okay, key describe. PV. Hundred megabyte rewrite many retain. The name PV log and host path PV log. Okay. So it looks good to me. Uh, am I losing any of you on the K explain? Okay, well, keep going. And let us claim that storage for application. Give a specification, so same thing, uh. Claim persistent volume. This should get us what I need. Maybe not, let's do a kind. Persistent. You. Okay. We'll grab this guy here, that should be everything I need. Vim six dot YAMO. And the name, it's gonna be claim log. Well, it's fifty megabytes. Okay, that should be simple. Okay. So here's our log, status pending. For. It doesn't tell specifics. Okay. Here you can see the request fifty megabytes, if you do a dash O YAMO. And it is pending. Yep. Okay, why is it pending? That's the next thing it's asking, it is pending. What is the state of the persistent volume? Let's get the persistent volume. As you can see here, the status is available. Okay. Do you guys have any idea why it is still pending, although the volume is available?
Nope.
I'm about to say the updating or?
It's not updating.
Is it, is it attached to anything, or is it just a plain?
So it should get binded automatically. As soon as it is available, as soon as a. A volume, persistent volume is available, the claim should grab it. Then we would, we would link a claim to the pod.
I, I do see, I do see that it has a phrase update that says pending inside the YAMO.
And let me put that two YAMOs side by side, maybe that'll make it easier. Use the, the claim. And here is the. The volume.
Yeah, I see available on one, and then I see pending on the other. In the actual YAMO.
So the reason why it is still pending is gonna be your access modes. In this case, uh, we have the claim as read, write once. While the volume itself is read, write many. So therefore, it's not gonna match, it's not gonna bind. Uh, the other way that it would not bind us also is if the storage, if it was asking for more. Then what was available for this, uh, volume. But that is not the case in this one. The names can be mismatched, that's okay. And. The reclaim policy is set correctly. So our issue is gonna be access mode mismatch. Okay, and let's go ahead and just update that. They want us up to the claim logs, the claim, so where's our claim? Just edit it. And. As you can see, the question, the status should be bound, so let's check that before we hit yes. Uh, so the volume is now bound, it's no longer available. And. The claim is also bound. As, as you can see here as well, read, write, many, read, write, many. They noticed that before. Oh, cuz it was missing from the claim log. Yeah, so fifty megabytes, people, yep, so we're good to go. Let's keep it pushing. You request for fifty megabytes hobby, how much capacity is now available to the PVC? So. You can check that here on the claim. The capacity is a hundred megabytes, even though we requested only fifty. Because of the fact that the persistent volume that was available was a hundred. If there was one that was available that would have been seventy-five, it would have took that one as it is more closely matching the request. So there is some knowledge built into it. And this gives the hundred megabytes was the only one available. So update the web app part to use the persistent volume claim as a storage, replace host path, configure earlier with the newly created. Okay, so let's go ahead. Okay, well, we can actually just edit. It was five. Nope, it's four. Okay. So in this one, we wanna keep all this the same. Cuz the volume bound points to the volume. And we can just change the host path to be. The claim. Now let's see if we have a, a here. It's gonna be kind pod. Here it is. Persistent claim, claim name. So instead of us having the host path. Okay. I think you messed up the spacing there. Yeah. And when I, I, I claimed, uh, it's gonna be claim log one. Okay. Okay, create. You probably fail when I just do, uh. Yeah, so I'll, I'll have to do a replace on this one. Fantastic. Okay, describe. Pod. So now it's log and. Read only follows persistent volume claim, claim log one. Okay. Good stuff. I'm just curious here, it's gonna persistent. This should be in slash PV log. Yeah, slash PV. Okay, so there's our. There's our data. Uh, what is the reclaim policy set on persistent volume PV log? We just looked at it. The reclaim policy is retain. Uh, I have not heard of scrub, not sure if that's actually real. But as I mentioned earlier, recycle is gonna be. Now let's look this up. Name policy. Reclaim policy, so yeah, retain, recycle, delete. And recycle apparently is a scrub. So. Well, it doesn't really explain what they do. That's interesting. Um, it briefly explains about, I wish they went more into detail, but, uh. Yeah, uh, kind of a self-explanatory. Uh, deletes the volume. I was curious if it's deleted, does the volume become available? When it recycles, yes, it will scrub the volume and then it will be. It will become available for any other pod to grab it. Or any other reclaim or claim part, claim. But persistent volume claim to grab the volume. Um, I don't know if delete does, I know retain, the volume will stay as we saw earlier. We delete that pod, the volume will just stay on that, on that, um. Computer. Okay. We, we're currently set to retain. What would happen to the PV if the PVC was destroyed? So in this case, the PVC, the persistent volume claim is destroyed, the persistent volume is gonna stay. It's not deleted, but not available, persistent volume made available again. No, it's not made available again, as retain is not deleted but not available. No other, um. Persistent volume claim will be able to claim it, if that makes sense. Try deleting the PVC. What am I doing? Let's edit this volume. Cuz I don't wanna delete it. I'm not gonna edit it. Okay, let's go ahead, a K delete. Persistent volume claim. Claim log one. Let's see if it hangs, as they said. But while it's doing this thing, let's go over here, tableau two. K get P PVC, does it actually work? It's terminating and let's get PV. It is still bound. Still terminating. Wonder if that's what it is, PVC stuck in terminating state? Well, we know this naturally is not scrubbing. Uh, PVC is being used by a pod. That makes sense. I actually have not done these ones, but it would make sense that because it's being used by a pod. It will not let you delete it. So let's go ahead and delete that pod. With that, it doesn't also get stuck terminating. Okay. Alright. It's the state of the PVC now. Pretty sure it's deleted. The resource found, so it has been deleted. And let's see the PV. Released. But not available. Okay, so that's the end of that lab. Um, this is not part of the lab, but I do wanna know if we are able to claim it again. Still a way to claim it again. If we go ahead and create that, um. Claim again, the same exact claim.
Yeah, when you say claim, meaning like recovery or?
So, no, so I mean, um, in this case. So, no, so I mean, uh, in this case. The volume is still, still exists, so if we were to cut. PV log uplog, so the volume still exists on the host. When I say reclaimed, I mean, can another pod, can you force another pod to grab this? This volume.
Okay.
Because as of right now, that part that we created, uh, we'll recreate it right now, key create dash F. Yeah, dash F, sorry. It was four? Okay, so the part is recreated. But now let's see, you see this ends, uh. Forty-three, thirty-four, six-six-two, user two and four logged out. It's not updating, although that, that simulator, okay, get pod. Nice, now it won't create it because it doesn't. Okay. Log. Web. Oh, we can't even connect to it yet. We need to start. Okay, so here it is. Unable to attach the mount. See claim. Also, the PVC is missing. So therefore, the queue, it looks like the queue scheduler is not scheduling this part. Because he hasn't even tried to create it. Or we would see a failed, we'll see a different, uh. Do a K get pods. When I see container creating, I assume that the scheduler has not scheduled it yet. Okay, so let's create that PVC again. Get. Five. Volume, so it's gotta be six. Okay, create. F six. Just create it. Okay, get PVC. Pending. Okay, so this is where it's gonna get stuck, because it will not be able to grab that volume because. Okay, get PV, it's not available, it's released. Uh, can we do a K edit? PV. Ten phase released. Here it is still available. No. And yeah, you, you won't be able to reclaim it up to the pod by the looks of it. There might be a way, but I do not know of a way as of right now. But yeah, um, that's gonna be all for the storage. For the persistent volumes and volume and volume claims, um, just to go over a bit. The volumes is a way to mount. Uh, directory or it's not only directors that you could use, you could also use, uh, other storages like, uh, AWS buckets. All kinds of things, but it's a way to mount something that is gonna be an external storage device. Like a host directory, uh, container somewhere else. You could even mount, I saw Git, GitHub on there as well. Uh, so it's a way to mount an external storage device to your containers, uh, for persistent volume. So what, once the part is deleted, you don't lose the data on that part, at least in that directory that you specify. And there's two different ways to do it, uh, specified on the part itself, or you could also create a persistent volume and persistent volume claims. Uh, there's some automation that you can do with persistent volumes, uh, once you have it set up that in a properly. You won't have to configure it on every single part, every time that you create, create it. Um, yeah, uh, that's gonna be all for today. Uh, do we have any questions on anything we went over today?
Not here, man, you did great, this is good stuff.
Alright, alright, thank you. So with that, we're gonna go ahead and wrap it up. Uh, as always, if you're watching this on YouTube, uh, just go ahead and like and subscribe if you found this useful. Uh, you could always come and join us every Monday at eight PM Eastern. Uh, just shoot me a message on YouTube or LinkedIn, I have the, the details in the description. Uh, thank you for watching and I'll see you guys on the next one.